I'll call the October 5, 2022, meeting to order. And since we just said the pledge, I'll dispense with that. Additional agenda or consent calendar items?
Let's see, we'll first move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting.
No, we're on additional.
We're on.
Addition to the agenda.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, so, yes, we do. We'll move to add item 3E, Hathaway Farms Discussion, under Old Business.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried unanimously. Moving on, delegations, does anyone like to address the board on any item at this point in time? Nikki, please come up, give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Nikki DiSardo. I live in Bush Hill, but I am also a Director of SCORE. And I am here to represent that organization, the Southeastern Connecticut Organization for Racial Equity. I'm here to urge the board to declare racism a public health crisis. This is something that SCORE has been in discussion with, and certain board members, for quite some time, an 18-month span. And so usually when I say that, declaring racism a public health crisis, the next thing that happens is, what is that and why? So, the reason why, so East Lime is one of the few towns in the area that has not declared racism a public health crisis. And the reason why you want to do that is because racism and discrimination negatively affect various social aspects that contribute to the health inequities experienced by people of color. And so, some examples of that are that 24% of COVID deaths of black, are black individuals, while they only make up 13% of the population. So, another reason why you want to do that is because it enables all policy and decision-making to be looked at through the lens of how it's going to affect people of color. And so, the timeline that we have had, we start, we gave a presentation to the board back in April of 2021. And we have been asked to, we've been asking to be put on the agenda since that time, so that we can educate and advocate to the new board that was put in place in November. So, we've been trying to, to share with you all why this is an important thing to declare. And so, we started back in April of 2021. We've had discussions with Kevin and Dan, emails back and forth for the past 18 months. And so, what we're asking is that we request to be put on the agenda by the end of this calendar year, so that we can inform and educate and answer any questions that may come up about this declaration and why it is so important. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki, and we can't respond right now.
I know.
But under Secman's comment, I will address that and we'll be in touch, for sure, most definitely. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, moving on to approval of the minutes of the September 21 meeting?
We'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 21, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any comments or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of October 5, 2022, in the amount of $11,578.88.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously. Sandy, thank you, I know we had to get that adjusted a bit, so thank you for getting that done. So, moving on, discussion regarding the American Rescue Plan funds allocation for the East Lime Historical Society. I've talked to Norm Peck, he is in the process of getting some additional quotes. He was not able to get them by this evening, so we will table that, because I think we'd like that. And he is actively trying to, he is getting some additional quotes, so he'll be coming back to us. While we're on this subject, I told Ann today and Kevin Gervais, our Finance Director, some good news for me. We got the additional funding, the remaining funding for our art money on Monday. So, we can, you know, people that have been waiting now can, Townside, can get the funding that they're looking for. Next item is discussion and possible action regarding a full-time animal control officer. Both our Animal Control Officer and Assistant are here tonight. Robert Allison, would you stand up for just a minute? In recognition, they are the only animal control officers in the state, to my knowledge, that got pink patches for the month of October.
In the country.
In the country, okay. But thank you for doing that and for the recognition and so forth. So, thank you. Rob has indicated in several of our past meetings that, you know, the need for making this a full-time position. Waterford is in agreement with that as well. I worked with our new Finance Director. We've identified how much we would need and the source of it for this year. Waterford has committed to it. They're in the process of finalizing their funding for it. So, as we can see, it's $49,000, roughly, little under, yeah, $49,662 for the remainder of the year, divided by two. So, we would be just a little bit, I think it's $24,831 is what our share would be. We already have $14,379 in the fund right now, so it would only require us to move a little over $10,000 on our half. So, that's something that, you know, we've been able to identify as far as the funding. So, Sandy, do you have the motion?
Yes, I do.
We have, first of all, I need discussion on this before I move forward. Anything, Rob's been for us a couple times. Does anybody like any more information from Rob, our ACO?
I guess, so you're saying that the Animal Control Officer would be working both in East Lime and Waterford?
They do right now, too, yeah. It's been, you know, and like, that's one of the things in the Charter, we're going to revise, but right now it says a dog warden has to be a town resident. We haven't had really a dog warden for, Rob, how long have you been, when you were still an officer in Waterford, you served. So, how long have we had this mutual two-town thing?
Well, I've been doing it for 11 years, but it's been going on for decades back when Stan Clark was...
Okay, so we're talking, we're talking a very long time. So, it's something that's been going on and it's, you know, we'll split the cost here. And when it comes to overtime, whichever town gets utilized as the overtime has to pay that overtime. So, this would work out very much so. And it'll provide a needed service for the town, because as I think Rob has, you know, shown on numerous occasions, both us, Finance, and the Police Commission, their calls for services are only increasing. And he made it very clear, they don't do coyotes, so.
That was my last question.
He doesn't do them, but I assure you, he takes calls for all sorts of wildlife, not just dogs and so forth like that. He's, both of them are extremely dedicated public officials. So, if not...
Yeah, we'll already make the motion here. Move to approve the conversion of the part-time position of the Assistant Animal Control Officer to a full-time benefited position. The cost of this newly created full-time position will be $49,662 in total and will be split equally between the town of East Lime and the town of Waterford. Finalization of said position is contingent upon approval by the town of Waterford to fund their share of said position.
And if we could just maybe add to that, the start date would be November 1, at the end there?
Anticipated.
Anticipated start date will be November.
Start date of November 1, 2022.
Okay, so, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further comments or questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Thank you both, Rob and Allison, thank you. The discussion, we had possible action on the garbage compacters. These would be the state-of-the-art garbage cans that were going to go on Main Street. The first ones would go, went in front of the movie theater, the other one down by Black Sheep, because those are identified as two very heavy garbage areas. They, for those that weren't aware, they compact the garbage when you throw them in, either the recycle or the garbage side. They even have a program to where they notify you when they need to be replaced and so forth. But the bill came in, we have roughly $12,400 in our NIP fund, which is money we get for the little nips that people throw on the side of the road. And it's determined by how many you sell in town, as to how much you get. The cost came in with shipping and handling to be about $13,500. So, rather than pay and then try and find another source of the $1,100 or so, it'd be better to hold off on this till we get our second allocation from the NIP fund, which will probably be late this month or early next month, and then we'll be able to come back and fully fund that and that, so.
How much did you say the first check was worth?
$12,400 and change.
That's what the first NIP?
Yes, and that was between the area from October to basically April.
So, we think that this one should be comparable to that?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. I know Norwich, in the first installment, got $42,000, so.
So, was he going to consider more than just two locations?
We're going to wait and see that, too, because there might be some other things in addition to the two garbage pails they'd want to do with some of the money to, you know, a possible sweeper to help actually pick these up in certain areas. So, but we definitely want to start with two. And this is going to be recurring on a twice-a-year basis, because I've also, I know one other big area is in front of Dairy Queen in the summer, because people cross the street, sit at the benches, and they now have three cans there to get all the refuse there. So, that would be there. So, we're on, the next item is Darrell Pond. We've talked about this extensively for a while. And as you said, we talked last meeting about having a resolution prepared by Town Council, which is done. We have in our packets, you know, an area that identified it, because there was some question as to how much it is. And going back to September 1, 2011, which is when we had the referendum, it was shall the appropriation and bond authorization of $4,235,000 for the acquisition of 301.55 acres of land on Mossbury Road in the town of East Lime be approved? And that referendum was approved, 1631 to 475. And then if you look at the map, it does specify the one on the deed recording, or the conservation easement, that 200-plus acres is a conservation and 101 acres is other property for the town of East Lime. That is the area we're talking tonight. Ms. O'Callaghan, would you please come up and expound?
If you look at the resolution, the draft resolution, which is before you, Kevin stole some of my thunder, because the resolution indeed talks about the 300 acres in the first recital, and then it drops down to 200 acres, because that was the part which was conserved in the conservation easement. And then it drops down to the 100 acres, which we found that was a good depiction of it in the map, which is at the very end of the conservation easement, which is at the back of the conservation easement. The good thing about that map is that it was drawn by the Engineering Department of the town of East Lime. So, if we want to get a map of just the 100 plus or minus acres of the Darrell Pond property, it would not be a hard job for the Engineering Department to put that together, because they have the information already. The next job that we had to do was to figure out what authority that the town has to be able to do this. And if you see the law that I think is in your package, which is the entitled Areas Under Jurisdiction of Parks and Recreation Commission, you'll see that the law says that this section shall apply to various defined parcels. But then it says, "And all other areas within the town designated as under the control of the Parks and Recreation Commission by vote of the Board of Selectmen." So, if we vote, if the Board of Selectmen votes to do that, this, in the resolution, we will be in compliance with the law that enables us to do that. So, we now have the area which is designated in the resolution, and we have the law which enables us to do that. And then we have to figure out, well, what are we going to be doing or allowing or prohibiting? And the first thing I did was, in the second numbered paragraph, I provided that persons entering upon or making use of the designated portion of Darrell Pond property, which we now know would be the 100 acres, more or less, shall be subject to the provisions of Sections 2 through 7 of the Ordinance concerning Areas Under Jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation. Now, what I used is the old Ordinance book when I referenced that. And what you have in front of you is the more recent compilation of the Areas Under Jurisdiction. And the old book uses 2 through 7. But the compilation, the compilers used letters instead of numbers. They used B through G, I think it is. So, when we get to the final draft, we should change that to B through G. Now, technically, I think you could read this and say that it's already incorporated when we say Areas Under Jurisdiction, because it fall, when we enact the law that says this is going to be one of the areas under the jurisdiction, not all these prohibitions automatically apply to an area under the jurisdiction. But it's better to be more definite, I think, rather than to leave it to a more abstract thing. And I thought it would be better to put it right in there and maybe even spell it out again by referencing each of the things that are prohibited. The things that are prohibited, like people cannot kindle fires and maintain fires, except in designated places, and discard rubbish, and you drive motor vehicles, except where allowed. So, I think we might want to decide whether or not we're going to say that specifically or just simply reference the old law. But we wanted to get, I wanted to get that in, so it would be clear in the draft. And then in Article 3, I say, "In addition to the ordinary and usual activities conducted by the Parks and Recreation Commission, the following activities and uses may be conducted on the designation, designated portion of the Darrell Pond property." And I then referenced the conservation easement that's on the 200 acres of the town's land, because it abut, this land will abut the town's land, and people on the 100 acres might naturally be going on to the conservation land. So, it makes sense to allow the flow of activities onto that. Now, one of the things I have to give you a caveat on, we've not talked to the Parks and Recreation people at all yet. And they're the people who will be administering this 100 acre. So, I think this is, has to be labeled as a work in progress, because we haven't talked to them yet. And they, I'm sure, will have some comments about this. But we incorporated the, most of the portions that mirror the conservation easement into this draft. And then, we knew that the Board of Selectmen wanted to have some oversight regarding this. So, in Paragraphs 4 or 5, we provided that if the commission, that being the Parks and Recreation Commission, desires to conduct activities which result in an alteration or destruction of the existing topography or of any other natural resources or natural habitat on these 100 acres, it shall first notify the Board of Selectmen of the proposed activity and receive the board's consent to conduct that activity. And similarly pertaining in Paragraph 5 to construct structures or facilities or improvements of any kind. Now, maybe a temporary structure might be different than a permanent structure. And I see up in, on the top of that page, we do incorporate minor rustic structures from the conservation easement, so we'll have to work on that. But that's where we are in our draft. And of course, you, the Board of Selectmen hasn't seen this, and you might want to be working on this. And we definitely have to work with the Parks and Recreation people. But we wanted to come back to you, to show you where we are on this right now. It's a work in progress.
Okay. Any comments?
Sure.
Ann, go ahead.
Question or whatever. So, with the original conservation easement, I saw that attached to that was existing easements are, were part of that, you know, old telephone easements and this kind of thing. So, if you could just update us, what's the, what is the status of some of those? And would they interfere in any way with this 100-acre planned usage?
That's a good point. Our office was not involved in the acquisition of the 300 acres. But we do know that there are quite a number of easements that crisscross that 300 acres. And whether some of those easements affect the 100 acres, we still have to find out. I know that when the conservation easement was drafted, there was a group of people who put together that easement, and that was discussed. And I don't know if the location of those particular easements was ever precisely described. So, the best place to start on that, and we will do that, is the Engineering Department of the town, because they must have looked at that when they put together the map. So, we will start with that, and that's a good point.
Bill Scherer is already looking into that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then my other question, thanks, is just generally, it seems to me, I mean, by our ordinances and our charter, that Parks and Rec has the authority to control, develop, control parks in terms of their development, management, and so forth. And, but we still have Board of Selectmen making some decisions along the way, so. And I see that this kind of like, you've carved out two in Sections 4 and 5 of the draft resolution. And so, just a thought, I was just wondering if we can have a more general, if it's possible to have a more general oversight clause. But it may not be consistent with, I was just taking a look at that, with the response, with the, with our statutory, or our ordinance, that the responsibility for the management, control, and development of all recreational and park facilities and programs of the town, except for those under Board of Ed, are with Parks and Rec. So, I'm just, yeah, I see the need for the carve-out, but I'm just wondering, is even a more general carve-out? Like, if we don't, if the things enumerated here are not, if uses are going, if there's a request for some use beyond what is listed here, even if it's passive recreationally, would there, would there, you know, would the Board of Selectmen have a say? Because it seems like there's very specific, two very specific in Sections 4 and 5 carve-outs for Board of Selectmen, additional approval needed.
Yes.
Not a more generalized approval? But that if, if anything that's not mentioned here that is suggested is, can the Parks and Rec Commission run with that and not need Board of Selectmen approval? I guess that's my question, no way of saying it, I guess.
Well, the ordinance pertaining to the Parks and Recreation Commission has a very generalized and broad definition of what they can do. So, you'd be bumping up against that.
Okay, that was, I guess that's, yeah, that was part of them.
So, it's, it's kind of hard to do too broad, generalized actions. I mean, I think you can carve out specific activities in your delegation or designation of what you want the Parks and Recreation Commission to do. But otherwise, they have a pretty broad writ.
It seemed to me in that ordinance, that the part of which I read, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, thanks.
So, we'll keep working on it, and we'll report back to you with your next...
The reason why I raised that is because at the last meeting, I think we had a more generalized sense of control over it, but at least I did. But I see your point.
Any other comments?
Yes. On the area that's going to be under the control of Parks and Rec, there is an area where we had originally, when this was purchased, discussed that part of that area would be for a future water tank location. And that's highlighted on this map. But I think that perhaps water and sewer should be consulted on this as to what they would need for access and for a protected area if we needed to use this for a water tank location. And secondly, my recollection of the original discussion also was that the majority of the easements on the protected park were for very specific uses, such as the need for additional utilities, utility easements, or for emergency purposes.
But we'd have to see who those easements run in favor of and whether they are, would still be active. That's what, that's what we'd have to look at.
Bill, were you starting to say something?
Well, my only question was, is number four, where the commission desires to construct their bloody, 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 is that anything above and beyond the sections above it? Because if I read, like, trail building, trail building obviously is going to be a destruction of existing topography or natural resources, because you've got to make the trail, you've got to change the ground, right? So, I'm just trying to see which one of those, I don't know, is dominant over the other?
Yeah, and we have to work on that, because indeed, we say in the upper part that rustic structures could be, could be allowed. So, indeed, that might bump into part number five when we say about structures. So, we have to see what the Parks and Recreation Department wants to do also, vis-à-vis these, yeah. And trails might be, might affect the topography and the natural habitat. So, we don't know how the, how the Parks and Recreation Department envisions how they're going to make use of this. And I, and that study that they're talking about might affect all of this.
The whole wording that says destruction of existing natural resources or natural habitat, I would think that we wouldn't want to destruct natural resources or habitat. So, I think destruction of natural resources probably should be promoted.
Yeah, and if we construct a parking lot, for example, that might, that might end up destroying some natural habitat. So, we have to work on this and see what the study says as we, as we work along on this.
One of the things is the study that we're looking to do is Parks and Rec would, has the Subcommittee and has the art funding to do this, but they'd like to see, at least I think, we don't have to vote on it tonight, but at least a commitment that we're open to placing this under their control. And I think what we're trying to do is make sure we build in the safeguards that we had talked about, so.
Yeah, and I think 4 and 5 do that, that says that if they want to do something above and beyond, then they just have to come back and tell us, and then we just...
Yeah.
Yes, or no.
And it abuts a body of water. And we want to see what Parks and Rec wants to say or do about that also. So, we have to, we have to work, but we do want to see if we can get some general parameters going and a structure for discussion.
It just feels like there's a little bit of sense of urgency to get this done, so that we can start doing that Darrell Pond study, right?
Well, don't they kind of have to do the Darrell Pond study to determine exactly what they want to do and how it's going to impact this? So, you can't really finalize this until they've done the study?
Kevin, I thought they couldn't do the study in terms of they had...
No, no, they said they'd like us to turn it over to them, but fire to us, prior to them doing the study.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is the egg and...
Because here, again, if, if a Parks and Rec Subcommittee is going to do all the work on this, and then, you know, and then we say, we decide we want to keep it, it's sort of like... sort of like, we've asked them to do our work for us.
They are us.
They are us to an extent, too, but you're right.
To be clear.
Yeah. But here again, I think, you know, my feeling has been, this is a really nice piece of property up there. This has been underutilized by the committee. There's some obviously parking issues, traffic issues because of the layout of Mossley Road. And, you know, there's no question that the, you know, the police, the parking, the local traffic authority would be involved in this, as far as we want to do, how do we put it, what kind of a parking lot do we put in that would be most environmentally sensitive? And, you know, it says in here already, enhanced habit wildlife and native biologic communities. Obviously, we want to make sure that's all covered as well. And I, when you look at the composition of this committee, it's got people who I think represent all these concerns, first, you know, the pollinator pathway people are involved. Bruce is involved as far as enhancing habitat for wildlife and endangered species and so forth like that. So I'm comfortable, i-if we can't vote on this tonight, that's fine. But I think, you know, we can't vote on it, but at least let Parks and Rec know, we, once we, you know, iron out the concerns and that, we're comfortable placing it under their control.
And I think we need an estimated, I understand you've still got work to go, but is it like months and months?
I would say, I don't want to say the next meeting, but the first meeting in November?
Maybe, I don't want to pin myself down either. It sounds like we have a little bit of a.
We would like to get it so that the Parks and Rec can do what they've got to do.
We can work, you know, Bill Scherer should have the, it won't take him but a few days to get out.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, with that, and as far as water town, so forth like that. And the utility engineer can determine, you know, the impact for water and sewer. We get that done fairly quickly, too, so.
And with regard to the, the study that's not yet been done, I guess, we, we have a chicken and the egg problem a little bit, so we, we, we'd be going in parallel routes. So we have to be careful of that, too.
Well, I think, you know, here again, if we can give, I think, Tom, maybe, I talked to you, would your board be comfortable? Obviously, we need to do it, you know, the town attorney wants some more research done on this. To make sure, before we turn it over to you, that we can do everything that is done properly, a sense that we are not opposed to doing this, we're encouraging you to move forward as we're going to move forward, to come up and make sure when we turn it over to you, we have everything taken into consideration. I know, Tom, if you could, you got to come and speak on behalf of the board, your board?
I'm Tom Beebe. I'm the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm here representing the Commission. We have had long discussions about taking over that property. And, and the Commission is in favor of taking over control of that 100 acre, plus or minus, known as Daropon, for further development of, in the, in the vision of what Parks and Rec is, has been doing within the town to provide areas for townspeople and outside area to be able to enjoy that area. So Commission is, is in favor of taking control of that. But like you said, we'd like to have some commitment. So as we move forward, we know that we have the vision in place on what we want to do there, as is controlling.
And I don't think I've heard anyone say we aren't, we're against doing that, just making sure everything is, you know, done. You know, here again, especially when you're talking about land, you don't want to, oops, we didn't know this 10 acres was, type of thing. So, you know, through our, the famous words, due diligence to make sure we, when we do turn this over to you, there's no concerns and you can move forward, or start moving forward now, if you'd like, based on what we've talked about.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other question for the attorney. When you, when you spoke, if there might be activities allowed that would flow into the reserved area, were you referencing, referencing that to easements?
The reserved area, I think you're talking about the conservation easement area?
Yes.
Well, that is subject to those specified activities. So the conservation easement would be enforced by the easement holder, which I think is a, a, an environmental entity. It would not be, it would not be directly involving the Parks and Rec.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comments on?
Yeah, I'm afraid I've got one more.
Yes, go ahead.
Why is, why is this, why is this piece of property treated so much different than all the things that Park and Rec are taking ownership of? Wouldn't we want to have these requirements apply to, to any, any of the other, I mean?
This is really the first area, I mean, turning over, like, a play, you know, like a park or something like that is fairly easy. This is an area that the town bought, you know, for basically, initially, one of the things was water, for the water tower, and then part of it was for conservation easement. So this is taking the 100 acres and trying to decide how to best utilize those. That was never, ever discussed in the purchase of the property. So now I think we're looking at moving it over to an agency, and the Parks and Rec would be the logistical one.
I understand that part of it. It's all the regulations that are down below it, I would think that would apply to everything. I, I don't know that those, what we have for requirements for trails, and what we have requirements for all the different things that you have in a natural area, I would think that would apply on anything that the town has with its Park and Rec plant. And maybe I'm just thinking, long-term, after we get this motion done, maybe we look and say, you know what, we should just have a, a park, what town use, open space, what are we going to do with all our open space, whether or not it's Park and Rec use, or whether or not it's, I think, I don't know, I'm, maybe I'm just thinking too big picture here. But it just seems like next time that we have an opportunity to buy some piece of land over some area, we're going to have to go through this whole motion again.
I think one thing is that, I mean, there is that conservation easement on this, which we may, I don't know what the situation is with, let's say, any of other parks in town with conservation easements, but this seems, it seems unique in its, in its characteristics.
And maybe if we do buy something in the future, that's, you know, a little piece of property off of some little road someplace, we can use this as the boilerplate for that.
Well, the, the town owns a big chunk of Asagachi Hills already, and that's maintained by, you know, the people, you know, the Asagachi Hills, friends of Asagachi Hills. So that has never been turned over. I think occasionally, we will, might go in there and do some, some help for them to open up a trail or something like that, but that's under them and stuff like that. And, you know, I can't foresee, here again, too, and I think Roseanne asked a good question, if we're going to turn things over to different town agencies or take it under the town's umbrella, there's manpower involved in, in taking care of that, too. You just can't, if you're going to open up trails and stuff like that, you're going to have to, you know, commit resources to it.
And most of that work that has been done, has been done by volunteer labor.
Vast majority of it has been done by.
Which is where I think chapter, there were three and four, are, says that if they want to do something, they come back to the town and say, we want to do this, so we need money, we need manpower, we need what we need. So I, I think that that would be covered under sections three and four.
I would think so, too, because same thing if they want to make improvements out at Bridebrook as far as, when they redid the basketball courts. You know, here again, you know, it's under, it's, you know, what they want to do and how they want to do it is under them, but it has to come here, because, you know, they'll need funding and so forth like that from us.
Yeah, so I, I'm not proposing that we slow this proposal down so that we can come up with world peace, but I think that we should try to, long-term, come up with a set of calls and requirements for these types of property. So that if we did someday adopt Asagachi Hills, we would have those regulations in place, or those requirements for the Parks and Recs, or whoever has it. So I guess that's probably, you know, world hunger kind of stuff, but I'll be quiet now.
That's okay. One other question. The proposed study, I understand that there's a, there's a proposal out there close in, close to the amount of the ARPA money, you know, available for the project. So is, does that have a time, is that time-sensitive, that particular quote that was given?
Most quotes aren't endless, so I don't.
Yeah. I mean, if we had a sense of that, that may help us, too, here with our chicken and egg problem.
No, I think this has to be in place before the, before they take it over, just so that they have some guidance. But I just think we need to get this finished.
I think Chairman wanted to say something.
Oh, Parks and Rec Director.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jerry Locke, and the Parks and Rec Director. And one of the things that I think that makes this a little bit unique, you know, is, is this property, you know, has, has been determined to have some kind of environmental or open space value for the, for the community, you know? And, and how we treat this property, I think, you know, my understanding of the, of the Board's concerns is that the town wants to ensure that this property is treated in a, in a particular way to protect that, you know, the nature and things like that. That's a little bit different than what happens at Bridebrook, or Vets Field, or, you know, Smith Harris, or things like that. So those properties, the, the, the thought process that goes through the Parks and Rec Commissioners' minds to develop those properties is, is one thing. You know, so that's got, you know, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. So I think, and I don't know if that helps answer your question there, Mr. Weber, but...
No, I, I think I understand that there's not one-size-fits-all, that there's different flavors of property, and some properties are maintained at different levels than other properties.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm thinking, this is the first, maybe, this is maybe the first very sensitive property that we're talking about moving into Parks and Recs, but it may not be the last.
Yeah, and I think, just, just from my discussions, I've, I've heard from the Commission members, you know, I, I think that, you know, passive-type recreation activities are what the, you know, the, the Commission has in mind, you know, but not knowing specifics until we do that study. But that's what it is, you know, they're not talking about building more fields, or building a golf course, or building, a building up there, they're talking about passive uses.
That we approve the golf course.
Yeah, so.
That was previously, that was a long time ago.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
I appreciate it, all of us. Well, almost all. Any further comments?
I was unzoning it for that.
Okay. All right, so, okay, we will continue this as an action item and not vote on it tonight, waiting for, hear back from that. But I think, I know, I think that the message we should relay to the Parks and Rec Commission, because they're looking forward and moving forward in getting some information done, is that we're not looking to, to block this at all. We just want to get, make sure we have all our eyes dotted and t's crossed before turning it over to you. Is that, okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I think also, we have an outside agency coming in to offer solutions and/or come up with a plan. And these aren't necessarily our local people. So I think that we do want to see what comes forward for a plan, and also we're using the federal rescue fund money.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on for discussion and possible action on the charter revision charge.
So there's people here who are here to speak also.
Right.
Okay. If I can make sure you know that.
Oh, no, I know.
That is my list.
Sandy, I gave you a list of the, of people with names. Did you, did you get that to everyone? Okay, good.
Yeah, we got those.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. I got it right here. Okay, prior to moving, one of the things we're planning on doing tonight is appointing the members of the Charter Revision Committee. And I know there's a few people here that are here to speak on behalf of wanting to be appointed to that. So Dr. Ginsburg, I know if you'd like to come up and give us, I said one minute, Roseanne, and everybody else said three, so it's up to you. Yeah, just give us your name, address, and, and your interest in the coming out.
Yeah, my favorite is to keep it short. I'm Jay Ginsburg. I live at Two Applewood Common. And I'm, I'm interested in being a part of the Charter Revision Committee. I, I want to give back to the town after living here for 30 years. And I'm a retired physician. I have the time to get involved and to contribute to the committee. I have an eclectic background, including a bachelor's in chemical engineering, and a history degree, and a finance degree, as well as a medical degree. So I'm hoping I could be a valuable contributor to revising the town charter and kind of bringing it up to date and using the newest technology.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Shackley, if you'd like to come up next.
I sent you each of these documents last night. I'm not sure how well they went through.
Okay.
Cyrus Space, so revisions to them.
Thank you.
I also wanted to note for Mr. Ginsburg, he's currently an alternate on the zoning commission.
Zoning Board, good.
Doctor, I was, I'm also a long time, I was 16-year resident of Planty Eastline, and I'm just really interested in doing all I can in my retired years to give back to the community, you know? I've got an extensive background, working with many state, local, and federal agencies in everything from budgeting to strategic planning, assessment practices, that I would like to use some of this experience and just bring it to the town, and do what I can to help the town maintain its current level of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Thank you to the Board of Selectmen to give me this opportunity to speak. My name is Vivek Purohit. I live at 48 Heritage Road in Eastline. I've been a 50, resident of Eastline for about 15 years. My son is a senior, he's going to go off to college, so I will have spare time. So I, I want to give back to the town. The town has given a lot to, to my son and our family. So I, my background is, I'm, I've been a PR scientist, I work for Pfizer, I, I'm a, I'm a clinical pharmacologist by training. And being a scientist, I have, I have developed skills of perseverance, I, I can handle a lot of, and understand a lot of data and information, and I have attention to detail. So I'm hoping to use these skills, which is what I do at Pfizer on a regular basis, to, to help the town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think that, anyone else that's designed to, why did you put your hand up? Okay.
I had one individual who was an unaffiliated, which was part of my job, to look at the unaffiliateds. And he has been out of town for the past two or three days, but he would like to be considered. He's working on his resume, written resume, and would have it to us in the next couple of days. As I said, he's an unaffiliated. I think that I can, I don't know, I didn't ask if I could use his name this evening, so, but he is currently serving on a board in town. So I prefer not to give his name tonight, as I didn't ask him if I should use his name. But he's planning, he just got back into town today and called me right away to say that he was very interested.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other people who have indicated an interest, I'll mention, and I'll mention here again, from the Democratic side, we've already had Mr. Ginsburg and Mr. Shackley. And Mr. Pearlheart, is that, I hope that, okay, thank you. And additionally, from the Democratic side, former First Selectman and former member of the Board of Finance, Beth Hogan, has indicated an interest, and I think I got an email from her. For the Republican side, Jeffrey McNamara, he's currently the Judge of Probate, and he's a former member of the Board of Selectmen years ago, and was also at one time a deputy First Selectman. Mark Salerno, Republican, former member of the Board of Selectmen, he's also a former member of the zoning commission, where he served as the Commission Chair. Larry Fitzgerald, who's a Republican, who's a former member of the Planning Commission and currently a member of the Library Board, he's a current, I think they refer to it as the president, yeah, not chair. Tim Hagan, Republican, who was one of the people, along with a few, the head, main people that got us the pool years ago, and then after that became a member of the Board of Education, serving for over a decade as the Chair. Unaffiliates that have indicated to me is Wayne Blair. He's a current member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and he's a former zoning enforcement officer in Crescent Point, a long history as the state, working for the state and enforcing a lot of state laws and so forth like that. On the finance side, Mariana Stevens, an unaffiliated as well, she's a current business manager at the Eastline Board of Education. And Anna Johnson, who is unaffiliated as well, and is a former finance director for the Eastline, just finishing up. as well, and is a former finance director for the Eastlime, just finishing up, just a little over a month ago. So those are the 11 people that have, between, Anne, thank you for all the work you've done there.
There was also two other people, so there was, I'm sorry, John Lombardo of Two Hillcrest Road, who had already, I don't know if it would be received, he had sent a letter in, he's a master's in arts, and he's a professor at Emerson College, and then the other person was Deborah Jett Harris, she's currently on the zoning commission, the president of Pine Grove Association, and she works for, she's a retired worker from the state of Connecticut.
Mr. Lombardo's party affiliation?
Democrat.
Democrat, and so is Debbie Jett Harris.
Thank you. Well, we at our last meeting had discussed for those people who we were not familiar with, that we would like to meet them and have them speak to us, give a brief presentation, and I would like to, I'm not familiar with Mr. Lombardo, but I think that was what we had decided on in our last minutes, that, I just reviewed our minutes, and I had proposed that for those people that we weren't familiar with, that they be asked to come before the Board so that we could meet them, and I would like to have that honored.
So in reply, I know Mr. Lombardo, he's a professor at Emerson, so he is, teaches Monday and Wednesday night, so I don't think he would ever be able to come to a meeting, which, I don't know if that would be difficult for him to even be on the Board, and Beth Hogan, I think we kind of know her credentials, and I think most of us know her, she was unable to be here tonight. Debbie Jett Harris also was unable to be here tonight, I don't know, I'm not sure why, so that...
Well, Mr. Lombardo, if he's unable to come due to work requirements, then I think that he should submit a brief written resume.
He did, I'm not sure it was...
I've already got it, yeah.
Do you want me to give it to you?
It was, I mean, I've already got one.
I didn't properly copy it.
Yeah, there, he did.
I got it, I got Debbie Jett Harris's, but I didn't see Mr. Lombardo's.
Yeah, no, he had a letter, and he did, he...
Okay.
Okay, moving on, so now we've got that, we have, as I said, last meeting, we did agree there'd be 11 members, electors of the town of Eastlime, and all the people that I mentioned have been verified as far as being electors and their party affiliation, Anne, I know you did the same thing, too.
Yeah, called, yep, and checked.
And, you know, getting, so, and regarding to the resolved, let the fine recommendations be directed to the Charter of First Considerations, we had one through 11 there before, and then, that's what I had, and then 12.
These are the...
Yeah, 12 and 13 of the, yeah, 12 and 13. 12 was initially considered, and this was brought up by the town clerk, as recommended to the town clerk by the Secretary of State, they have said that any time a town has a charter revision, to at least have this considered. Consider a possible amendment to Section 2.5.4 to provide that an appointee to a vacancy in an elective office shall serve the remainder of the term that was filled. Currently, if you get filled and you're six months into a term, you only fill it to the next municipal election, and then you have to run for the two-year slot. I guess this, statewide, has caused some problems, it has caused some problems on a couple of occasions in town here as well in the past, so this would mean if you got appointed, you would fill out the remainder, if it's a two-and-a-half-year term, you would fill that out, if it's a three years to the next, to that term would be used, so you'd be filling that vacancy through the remainder of that term. And then the last one is, Roseanne brought this to my attention yesterday, consider reinstating the Conservation Commission, which will be comprised from members of both the Inland Wetlands Agency and the Commission on National, Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources. They were together at one time, years ago they were split out, and now it's made it a little more difficult for ex officio and so forth, and for having a staff member assigned to help out there, to associate, ask for that consideration. And what I did do here is, talking with Ed, we were looking, going backwards, the town clerk said they would need by November, September 8th of next year, the question for a municipal ballot in November, so we'd have plenty of time as far as, from then, to get it done, but they just need the question, so it'd be available for the election, which next year will be on the 7th of November. So, working backwards, so we decided that, I decided, this is my decision or my recommendation, August 1st of next year would be the day we should have the draft report, that gives us ample time to review the draft, make recommendations, and then for the Charter Revision Commission to submit the final version, and then for the Board to either accept or reject that at that point in time, so. Comments? Moving forward? Okay, the question is, do we, I mean, we have had some people here tonight, we have people that have indicated, is there a feeling to appoint members to the Charter Revision Committee and give it the charge tonight, so we can move forward? Ed, you wanted to speak to this as well?
The only advice I would give...
Be careful.
It's a good thing I have a tort lawyer here, huh?
Watch out.
The only advice I would give is that with your September 8 deadline for next year, and your August 1 deadline, time is going to fly, you're in a time crunch already, and the other piece of advice I would give you was if you can find a good staff person to do all the spade work, and all the record-keeping, and all the telephoning, and you're going to have a good deal of subcommittees, and you're probably going to want to talk to other Charter Revision Commissions to see what they thought, a good staff person would be invaluable, that person is the hub of the wheel.
We had, I worked, talked to Kevin as far as we're allocating a certain amount in the legal budget, we're running nicely, way under in legal, or under legal expenses this year, so we're going to set up a line for that, and also, too, with, and I'll talk about this a little bit, too, with not filling the HR position for another week, and IT for several months, we've seen some savings, so we're gonna, we're looking at identifying some funds to hire an intern to do a lot of the research of the committee, because, you know, it helps if someone is doing a lot of the background on a daily basis, there's a couple of people who have worked us as an intern over the past several months, that this would be something they would excel at, so that research that will need to be done, which will free up a lot of time, instead of doing research, for discussion and how to move forward, so we are going to establish a line for expanding, or having someone available to do the research.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm comfortable moving forward with a list of people tonight, if everyone else would rather wait till the next meeting, or we could do that, but I don't want to wait much longer, because I think we've got to, we obviously have some people here tonight who have made a commitment to come and see us, and I think it's, I'm looking forward to getting this started, because the more time we give them, the better job they'll have an opportunity to do, so, but I'll see what everyone else's feeling is on it tonight.
No, I'm concerned that we haven't started sooner, because it's my opinion that we need to, we need to give them time to do the research, to feel like they can call in as many experts as they need to, and to do what they need to do. I think if we wait another week or month, it's gonna, it's gonna make things that much harder, right? You're talking about eight months now, instead of nine months, it's difficult.
And agreed, some of these things are very easy to do, like eliminating references to one of the charges, but here again, they can add to this as well, I mean, as it says in here, "We'll give 13 recommendations to them, but the commission may also consider such other items pertaining to the charter as it deems necessary or desirable or necessary", so they can add to that.
Yeah, so it's my opinion that they're going to have to have their kickoff meeting and a couple of follow-on meetings before they even start doing their subcommittee work, and then you're gonna blink, and it's gonna be Christmas, and you're gonna blink, it's gonna be 4th of July, and it's gonna be like...
Right, and for the first meeting, Attorney O'Connell will be there to help lay it out, because, Bill, you've been there before, Roseanne, been there, to set by and set forward how we're going to proceed and so forth, like I give a lot of instructions, and the intent will be to have, like I said, we have one intern here, one we're working remotely now, but if they are both available to them, we do have the resources for that, it allows a lot more opportunity, if one can't make it, the other one's available, and they do work, we will work good together, so.
So would we consider alternates, or is that just gonna muddy the water? In the event that, in the event that one of these kind of...
We have these other two people who wanted to be heard, they could be alternates, but...
Yeah, I was thinking along the same way.
We, Ed, I defer to you, are alternates possible on this as well?
Department?
Alternates, appointing an alternate to the commission.
I don't think so. The statute does not, the statute does not provide for alternates. It just says members, the statute just says members, not alternates.
Okay.
And it would cause all sorts of confusion when the commission comes to vote, how does an alternate sit when there's a member, and, no, the answer is no.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Concise.
Concise, thank you.
Yeah, I think we should move forward, especially, you know, I haven't been on one, but given that, you know, Bill's saying that you really need the time, and, you know, you've been on it, and you realize that time is of the essence.
It's like you say, people done it, we just, you needed to do the research.
Yeah, I think that's...
And then we can, you know, and my thought would be, and I was just thinking this now, is the people that were going to be working, doing some of the legwork, probably touching base with Ed very soon, so that they, you know, basically know what their charge will be as well, and moving forward, so, but...
It could be that, I mean, ideally, I'd like to see the information about the remaining candidates who kind of didn't get under the wire, but we really didn't have a wire, it was sort of an organic process here of going out and finding the individuals, and/or them coming to us and expressing their interest, but, you know, it's possible that we still hear from the others, but, and just keep that list of one, two, or three people, in the event that someone here cannot serve, can, I would imagine that we could reappoint, or appoint...
A vacancy.
A vacancy on this.
You could appoint someone who, if a vacancy occurs.
Occurs, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I think that's a good idea.
I'm thinking that's a, I understand the urgency to go forward, but, and, you know, to respect their, you know, their interest in serving, and the possibility that with 11 people and everyone's scheduling, that someone may drop out, is very possible, or possible, so, that's just a thought.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to dissent. Our agenda states that it'll be discussion and possible action on the charter revision charge, it does not say that we will appoint members this evening. For quoting from our last meeting minutes, "The board members agreed to bring back the results of their inquiries to the next Board of Selectmen meeting." Does not indicate that we would vote tonight on those, so I'm going to be in opposition to this, not because I'm opposed to any of the current members who have expressed an interest in serving, I think this is very important, many decisions that will, that the commission will make will affect everybody in town, and I think as we have three people who have expressed an interest, who have not had an opportunity to speak to us, then I'm going to vote no on the entire list.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I would think we would take the draft resolution with, do we?
With the list of...
With the, with the individuals for appointment, and I think we should, you know, read into the, the, do we need to read the whole resolution, Ed?
I think you could, you could act on it as presented, all of you have it in front of you.
Okay. I would say move to, how about a motion to...
You haven't got the...
A motion to, a motion to approve the resolution as presented with the following individuals, as, with the following members, or...
With the following 11 electors of the town of Eastlime...
Exactly.
...being appointed to the Charter Revision Committee.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
Okay, sure, I'll go for it. Move to approve a resolution concerning the institution of the Charter Revision Commission for the town of Eastlime as presented in draft resolution dated October 5th, 2022, in its entirety, and now therefore it's resolved that the following 11 electors of the town of Eastlime are hereby appointed to the Charter Revision Commission, I'll read from this list provided.
Just the name, yeah.
Jeffrey McNamara, Mark Salerno, Timothy Hagan, Larry Fitzgerald, Beth Hogan, Barry Shackley, Jay Ginsburg, Vivek Purohit, Wayne Blair, thank you, Mary Anna Stevens, and Anna Johnson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, one of, the motion passes four to one, and thank you for, the gentlemen in the audience, for your very, your dedication, because I'm, Bill can tell you, he's been a former member, it's going to be a busy several months for you, but thank you so much, thank you so much. And I'll be emailing you, because I'll call a meeting probably, and I'll chair the meeting just to begin, I was talking to Attorney O'Connell, and basically the first item would be for the group to elect a chair, and, you know, basically the leadership, and then Ed will give you a presentation on where to go from there, so, so you just want to be meeting as a group going, what's next, so, he'll be there to say, so, thank you so much, and thanks for the Board for all their input on this, this is, I thought this would be real easy until I sat down with Ed one day, and I was like, whoa, this is not an easy thing to do, so, and he said, basically, you work backwards from the beginning to see how to go there, so.
Thank you for coming to present also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item will be a discussion on Hathaway Farms, I'll let Anne Chichalla talk to this in just a minute, but a couple weeks ago, last week, Hathaway Farms, they came in and recorded the deed, the property Hathaway Farms has been sold to the Eastlime Land Trust, and with a bridge loan and some other things like that, and it was recorded here, it's a public document available in the clerk's office for review by anyone, but, Anne, you said there were some comments made last night at the Inland Wetlands meeting?
Yes, I attended the Inland Wetlands meeting last night, which was, I guess, October 4th. Ronald Lewidge, the president of the Eastlime Land Trust, stood up, as did Art Carlson, but Mr. Lewidge did report that the Eastlime Land Trust has finalized the acquisition of the Hathaway property, he commented that it had been identified as the number-one property for preservation. He said the Eastlime Land Trust paid fair market value for the Hathaway property, and the price was determined by the yellow book appraisal prepared for the Eastlime Land Trust by a D deep-approved appraiser. They expect to give public access to the property sometime next spring or early summer. Under the terms of the bridge loan, the Eastlime Land Trust is forbidden, though, from allowing public access to the property until the loan is paid back. Having said that, Mr. Lewidge did say that he was disappointed in the Board of Selectmen saying that the Board of Selectmen, I guess, had access to some federal grants that were not taken advantage of, and because of that, the Eastlime Land Trust was not able to get these grants, and they were required to borrow a significant sum of money to protect the property from being converted to development. So, at that point, that was the basics of... So at that point, that, that was the basics of what he said. Let me just see. He said that there was a survey done that took 15 months, and I guess it was difficult to get the acreage because they had never had a prior survey to determine the, this unsurveyed, unsurveyed large parcel of property. And then Mr. Carlson stood up and just said that the property would increase and protect the watershed and give recreational activity.
Just a comment, I mean, we have discussed this for several months, and according to the deed recorded here, they paid $2.3 million for the, approximately $2.3 million for Hathaway Farms. Regarding federal grants, that was never brought to my attention, nor was I ever aware of any, ever. And this goes back to, until, once I started talking to the land trust and to the former owner of Hathaway Farms, there was a booklet given to me that had said there was two yellow book appraisals in it, and they were not in the book, and we had requested that, and we were never, ever provided with those. We made a request to deep for those at one time under FOI, and they said no because it was still under, they considered it still a real estate transaction underway. And then we were even contacted by the attorney for the land trust that, or the land trust saying, who gave us permission to make the, that we never asked for permission to make an FOI request, which we don't have to do. So that's never done. We never saw an appraisal till we hired an appraiser and we got an appraisal dated April 7. After that, which was significantly lower than the one of the 1.65 million we were told about in the yellow book that appraised it from 2020 that we hadn't seen, we were given an appraisal on, on a report that was published on, by the land trust. They gave it to us on April 27 that indicated it was valued at 2.1 million. We tried to negotiate, we, and here again, the survey was not done for quite a while going, and we thought we had 120 acres, it was redefined as 114. And a portion of the, the property, the, all the area abutting, Patagonia Lake, which you, which you would consider waterfront, one was sold to a resident of town, they bought 10 acres several months ago, and there's another still three acre part at the, a little over three acres at the northern part of that, that is being held for development. So we really intended, we really were hoping we could make a deal on this, but I just, and we, we communicated with, I communicated to the board, I just never felt we now had enough information, and the property changed a lot too. There were different areas, openings and stuff like that, so I just felt not, I really did not feel comfortable coming forward or moving forward with an offer with as many questions as I had, and that I communicated with you, so that's all I really have to say. I'm glad it's gonna be preserved as open space, it's a very, you know, great piece of property to have, and land trust has even talked to me about us looking at possibly purchasing some other property from them to maintain it as a conservation, put a conservation statement, which, you know, we'd be open to discuss very much with them, so I have no problem moving forward and talking with them as, as time goes on, or the board does it either, I'm sure. Any other comments?
No, I was just surprised when they were saying that there was some federal grants that, that we hadn't, you know, taken advantage of because I'm pretty sure we would have taken advantage of any, any grants if we could have.
And here again, I thought, you know, as things progressed, I thought we were coming to a, close to an agreement, as we were getting towards May and June and so forth moving forward. But then Mr. Carlson mentioned to me that they were planning on purchasing the, the property, so at that point, so. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on to executive reports, start with Roseanne.
Okay, I attended the Board of Education Monday night, and they discussed the difficulties of conducting instruction as the internet has been completely out since Saturday, not available to any of the students in the school system, and they are scurrying, trying to get it up and running. So far, hasn't been successful. Teachers are going kind of crazy because of course they have lessons and things, and I think it's particularly hard on the new teachers who are used to having full use of the internet and the resources for on-the-spot lessons, things. So they're trying to be creative and do different, do different types of activities to try to get the lesson materials across, and they don't have, they have no idea when this will be up and running again. Apparently it wasn't in speaking with someone today, it's, the entire system was not up as of, at least midpoint in the day. So I can only imagine how frustrating that was for everybody. They heard a special presentation by an outside group on dealing with conflict and different ways to deal with conflict resolutions, different approaches, and unfortunately, I had to leave to go to another meeting, so I was not able to hear the end of the presentation, but I think it might have some interest for people if you could catch the program, the meeting online, I mean, on TV. And zoning is canceled for tomorrow night, so that's my report.
Thank you.
Just Water and Sewer I went to, but you were at that and chairing it, so you probably do that one there.
No, if you want to, go ahead.
That's actually okay because I didn't
Oh, okay, you weren't, okay.
Didn't prepare to speak about it.
Okay.
But that was it for me.
Okay.
Okay, I went to the, last night, there was also the Historic Property Commission meeting, and basically they were just talking about different events going forward. So this Saturday at the Brookside Farm, they're having a dedication of the kitchen from 1:00 to 3:00. Sunday, October 23rd from 4:00 to 6:00, the evening of smores and scary stories at the Brookside Farm. They said just bring sticks for smores and they provide the rest.
Yeah, it's a nice event.
October 15th from 10:00 to 3:00 at the Samuel, excuse me, Samuel Smith Farmstead, they're having an end of harvest celebration, showing how life is on the colonial farm. They'll have house tours, farm animals, apple pressing, cider and donuts. October 9th at McCook Park from 12:00 to 4:00, they're having the second annual Indigenous Peoples' Day. This is to learn about the Nahantuck history. They're gonna have history, walking tours, doing pottery making, hearing stories and scavenger hunts. That was all I have. Thank you.
Bill? None scheduled, none held.
Good, I like your report too, so, anyway. Okay, I'm to my two. Nikki has left, she came in to make sure our score, since they've asked. I'll try and figure out probably in November if they'd like to make a presentation, more than welcome to do so. I know, Ann, you and Dan are gonna, are planning on reaching out to the score group too, so that would be really helpful to continue the dialogue with them. I appreciate Nikki taking the time to speak tonight. We have finally hired an IT and an HR director. Our HR director is, grew up in town, so it's somebody local, she's starting next Tuesday. The IT director lives in Killingworth, he'll be starting next on the 24th, so we've gotten some stuff there too.
Did you give us some names?
Oh, I'm sorry, the name for Sandra, now we've got two Kevins and two Sandys working in the building, so it's gonna make, so Sandy, Sandra Spencer.
Is the IT director?
No, I'm sorry, this is the HR director, Sandra Spencer. Her brother Roger is on Water and Sewer, so lifelong resident, or longtime resident of Nyannick. East Lime, the IT director is Daniel Cleary, he lives in Killingworth, he's coming to us starting on the 24th, looking forward to it. And, you know, I did mention a couple of things, I was having my final interview with him on Monday when, you know, I was made aware of the school situation as well, and he's, you know, here again, the school has their own, they contract, yeah, it's not a, they contract for a service, so, you know, here again, this is something he wouldn't help out with, but here again, he said he'd have some ideas to help share with them, so that.
So did we also lose internet here then at the town hall?
No, we did not, no. In fact, no, in fact, in what we did on, we did on Monday, and this is without the IT director here, we decided to send out, hey, be careful opening up any emails, you know, and one of the things the IT director said is, we have to look at about the fact that, you know, be very careful. He said there's programs that a lot of towns have and they're, they're costing, you know, there's a negative impact cost-wise where if you open the wrong email, you get flagged and you have to be in training. And talking to some towns that have this, the most frequent person is either the mayor or the first selectman doing it because, you know, you gotta open up your emails because it could be from someone else, but, so it's funny, but he talked about that too. We've also talked about, you know, because of the fact that, you know, somebody could, you know, use this to hold you hostage or something like that, we've heard that nationally. Kevin Gervais is looking into Kerma's insurance for that too, so we could have something like that covered because they do own it, offer it, so we'll look into that. Moving on, the demolition to north end of town is, it's almost like they never existed. You drive by there, it's like the mobile station, bootleggers and the hotel are never there, so we're moving there. Construction is going on, on the exit 75 gas station, that's moving along nicely, and when I did talk, I did remind him about the gate, they always said at some point in time, and he said, yep, I know it. And they're also getting ready to, this is the same company that purchased the car wash, and they were in meeting with a plan with Bill either today or tomorrow, they're coming in to meet with him on that too. On some positive notes, the, unless you live on Grand Street or Smith Avenue, Siff Bakery should be open within the next couple of weeks. As you can see, we've tried to address some of the traffic concerns, they've lined both Smith Avenue and Grand Street with center lines and shoulder areas to help with parking because that will be obviously a problem when the bakery opens, and they're doing a review right now to see if a four-way stop is warranted at the Smith Avenue, Grand Street intersection. I think it is, but here again, town engineer and, and police department are taking a look at that, doing that too. Oyster Festival, which both Ann's were at, that was a really resounding success, Ann, Roseanne, you were there too. There was
So many people.
So many people, and each ticket is a dollar a piece, and I know they sold about 71,000 tickets. Now, that doesn't mean the Miracle League made 71,000, but it was packed from 12:30 until, they had to remind people, it's closed, it's time to go. And the following day at the VFW, and it was played on the Sue Carmo Field, as we talked about Sue had the field named after there, and she basically runs that, she, everything that is made there is donated to the VFW and with the teams and so forth like that, they made $5,000 that day. You know, even the food is pretty much donated and they just work on tips and so forth like that, and so that was really nice. I went to Saturday night, I was invited to Roastin' Neger for, to help celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. It was a great time. I was, my wife and I were sat with the consul to the ambassador of Ecuador, he's responsible for the northeast states, he just got here, he's been in the diplomatic corps for Ecuador for over 40 years, his last assignment was in Moscow.
Wow.
So, yeah, so he came here, there was a language barrier, but it didn't interfere with it, we communicated great. Looking forward to meeting up with him and his wife again, it was a really nice time. They recognized an artist, Fabian Tarashi, I'm not getting the name on, who had his artwork on display at Roastin' Neger, but a very nice evening to celebrate a lot of the accomplishments of that community and in the area. So I think that's about it. Any questions for me?
Yeah, the water restrictions looking like they're gonna be right up?
Okay, good, that's a very good question, the water restrictions. And that was one of the things Jeff, Jeff Newton called me one day and said, hey, can we start irrigating the field? Because we're getting really down to timeframe, so I said, yeah, it shouldn't be a problem, we talked to the utilities engineer. It was a problem because right, right now, well five is the one we just rehabbed, is working fine, but well six has got some sodium problems and so forth like that, so they weren't comfortable with it, but as of right now, I think, they think it, after the rain we've had over the last week or so, they're getting ready to remove those too. And Water and Sewer, one of the things we're looking at doing is repiping going out to well two. It's gonna cost about $800,000, of course, that's money that comes out of the Water and Sewer budget, but looking at finding a way to appropriate that and bond that because that will really increase our ability of being able to provide water to the town from our own resources because we got a lot this summer beyond what we normally expect to have to get from New London. They give it to us, but it comes at a price, and we owe them that much more water in the winter, so, good point there. So, if that's not it, any public comment? Kevin? No? And so, so there's no selectmen response, so we need a motion to enter into executive session for contract negotiations and firefighters union and pending litigation.
Okay, move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations, firefighters union, and pending litigation. The board entered into executive session at 8:34 PM.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
A second, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're in executive session. Sandy, you take off, I'll tell you what happens, because there's no pending action coming out of it.
Okay, so, let's see, Board of Selectmen returned from executive session at 9:07 PM, and no formal votes were taken.
Okay.
Okay.
And
And moved to adjourn the regular meeting of October 5, 2022, at 9:07.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're adjourned, thank you all, and if you stayed online, thank you for joining us.